Motion to approve the agenda with a item number thirteen to be deferred for two weeks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with a deferral of item number thirteen for two weeks. And a roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Yes, all the, um, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission minute, meeting minutes from November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. Is there a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second and roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Item number B is approve the commission meeting minutes from eleven fourteen, two thousand sixteen. And we're going to put si- item C also in there, and that's approve the amendment, amendment to the minutes from November for two thousand sixteen. So that's item B and C. Is there a motion for those two?
Second.
A motion and a second with a roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of five hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and seventy, five hundred and fifty dollars and forty-seven cents, an electric, an election bill to be paid of seventy-three thousand, ninety-four dollars and eighty-five cents. Is there a motion?
So move.
Pay all the bills?
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the auditor's account with the treasurer's, county treasurer as of October thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, and item B is the human services quarterly client satisfaction survey report. Those are both on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a motion and a second with roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Item B is a special commission action to approve immediate hiring of a victim witness assistance position which was approved in two thousand seventeen. Erin, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Erin McGowan, Minnehaha County State's Attorney. As we briefed the county commission earlier in the budget season with the alleged measure S. Marcy's Law, we have immediately felt the impacts of that measure, although the proponents stated that there would not be a, an impact on the taxpayers or counties. That was a false claim. Our current staff had to send out eight hundred letters immediately to current victims to become compliant after the election was certified last week. We are really scrambling to keep up with our current responsibilities. We, several weeks ago, passed over a ten thousand adult criminal cases for the year. As the commission knows, we've had dying murders as of this week now in this county. Savin is helpful for notification of victims. However, we also have five thousand juvenile cases every year, and savin is not, does not incorporate juvenile cases. So those are all manpower hours for my office. A lot of those are strings of burglaries and car hopings with many, many multiple victims. We are asking this commission today to consider the request for two thousand seventeen to hire that victim witness assistant immediately. I do expect to be coming back to this commission once we've analyzed the impact of Marcy's Law for additional personnel requests. As you probably know, Pennington County immediately hired four new staff members for their state's attorney's office. I know Brown County hired additional staff, and certainly this county will need to do something to be compliant with that measure. But as far as today's purposes, we are asking for hiring the victim witness assistant a few weeks early. I think I have thirteen point five nine percent left in my personnel budget from other turnover. So we do have the room in our budget yet this year.
Thank you, Erin. Is there any questions for Erin?
Sadly, Marcy's Law was not needed in South Dakota. We already had a victims witness protection program in place. State's Attorney's Office and Public Defender's Office and several others around Sioux Falls had worked very hard to try to get the information out there. We didn't have a budget, and we were fighting people from California. So sadly, this has passed, and we will deal with the repercussions, which will probably be increasing taxes and significant cost to our budget going forward, which is not budgeted for two thousand seventeen. Commissioner Kelly?
I'd like to move to approve the request for a new victims, what does, victims witness assistant for the state's attorney's office.
Sorry, second.
I have a motion and a second to go ahead and do an immediate hire of a victims witness assistance that was approved for two thousand seventeen. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number six is application for abatements. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Item A is DPNO number four, seven, zero, four, eight, in the amount of five hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety cents, and DPNO number two, one, seven, four, three, in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Robert Wilson, good morning, Robert.
Good morning, commissioners. Robert Wilson with the commission office. The applicant has contacted the commission office and requested a compromise and release in full with no payments for two DPNOs. Number seven, four, seven, zero, four, eight, in the amount of five hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety cents, and DPNO two, one, seven, four, three, in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. These liens were identified as part of a title search of property that was once owned by the applicant. The applicant has since transferred that property through a quitclaim deed to her daughter. DPNO two, one, seven, four, three, is in the name of the applicant and her ex-husband. A divorce decree provided by the applicant indicates that the couple was divorced in February of nineteen ninety-eight. After the couple divorced, the lien was paid in full and had a zero balance. The full amount of the current bound, lien balance, twenty-two fifty, was recorded in July of two thousand sixteen for burial expenses for the applicant's ex-husband eighteen years after the couple was divorced. DPNO four, seven, zero, four, eight, for five hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety cents is solely in the name of the applicant. Represents court-appointed attorney expenses for two separate IVC commitment petitions, recorded both on the same day in January of two thousand two. That was four years after the applicant and her ex-husband were divorced. One involved the applicant's son, the other involved the applicant's ex-husband. In both cases, the applicant was the petitioner. The leaned amount in the case involving the ex-husband is two hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy cents. The leaned amount in the case involving the applicant's son is three hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents. For your review, we've provided you with the lien application we received, the lien summary sheet, divorce decree, and the vouchers for both IVC filings, and I would stand by for your questions.
Is the applicant here? No, the applicant is not here. So are there any questions for Robert on this? I'd like to do these in two separate ones. If we could deal with the first one, which is DPNO number two, one, seven, four, three, and that is the burial expenses for her ex-husband in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll make a motion to delete that from the record.
Have a motion to remove the lien from the applicant-
With no payment.
With no payment. Is there a second?
I'll second. I have a question.
I have a motion and a second. Question from Commissioner Kelly.
Was there an estate of any sort on the husband? Do you know?
Do, do not know. We don't, that, that information was, was not provided. You, you saw in the, the applicant, the application that was forwarded, there, there were many parts of that application that were, were not completed. I do not have that financial information.
I mean, that concerns me a little because I think one of the reasons for these liens is that if there's a, a state, just like any other monies due to people, that they're settled before the estate is closed. I don't know if we can find that information out.
It, it stays on the estate. It doesn't, it doesn't.
So the DPNO number two, one, seven, four, three, would stay on the estate of, oh, excuse me, I'm just asking, the estate of the deceased?
Yeah, basically what triggers the closing out of a lien by operational law is the closing of, of the estate, but a lot of folks, of course, don't have their estate probated. And I, and I think in those cases, and this very well may be one, since we're so many years past, that's part of our routine lien cleanup with the auditor's office sometimes, because if there is no estate, there's no trigger for removal like there is. If, if there is an estate proceeding, proper procedure is to notice us of that, and we make our claim, and the court sorts those out, basically, so. But in this case, I have my doubts that if there's burial expenses, that there was any estate in this case, obviously.
So, uh, and I'm sorry, the motion though is to forgive, is to take her off the, or take, remove the lien, I guess, isn't it?
From, from the applicant. That's my understanding.
Are we including or not including the sons and?
No, right now, we're just doing DPNO number two, one, seven, four, three. So this is just-
And that was, that was all after the divorce?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So we have a motion and a second to remove this two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the applicant to remain against the estate if there is one of the deceased. Roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Yes, that motion passes unanimously. Now we'll deal with the DPNO number four, seven, zero, four, eight, in the amount of five hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety cents, and that is for two involuntary commitments which were made by the applicant against her ex-husband and her son. Discussion on that.
Here again, I want to ask on, the, the husband, she did one on the husband, is that correct?
Yes, she did.
And, and one is for her son. It, it seems to me that the, she's still responsible for the one on the son, but I don't know why she would be responsible for their husband. He's an adult. Or is that the family member deal where?
She committed her ex-husband against his wishes.
Well, nobody wishes to be committed.
If I may.
Yeah.
An ex-husband under these statutes is not defined as a family member. An ex-spouse does not qualify, but of course, a son does. So that obligation statute, if we're advising you, attaches to the son's IVC, but not the ex-husband's.
But it is in there right now, right?
Correct.
Yes. Thoughts?
So, yeah, I guess, never mind.
Comments from anybody? What should we like to do on this one?
Madam Chair, Jeff Barth here.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to leave the lien from her son's IVC on and to take the other one off, just put it on the estate.
Okay, I have a motion to remove the ex-husband's lien and put it on his estate, and to leave the son's, the applicant's sons in the amount of three hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents on the applicant. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
This is Jean Bender here, and I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other comments on this? That will do a roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Then we'll go on to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda today? And I don't see anyone. Okay, so we will move on to regular business. Item number ten is consider a resolution to allow Minnehaha County to replace the Community Corrections Center, the CCC, with a new facility attached to the current jail for the financing amount of forty-six million dollars, and authorize the auditor and commission chairperson to approve the financing, financing documents. Carol Mueller.
Good morning, commissioners. Carol Mueller, Minnehaha County Commissioned Administrative Officer. Over the past four years, you have reviewed the need to replace the Community Corrections Center, and during this time, you have diligently researched options, and your proposal reflects not only the need for inmate beds in Minnehaha County, but also the spirit of cooperation with governmental partners and national best practices for continuing supportive alternatives for criminal justice. So presented for your approval today is a resolution and the municipal advisor agreement, which would start this process. The new resolution will allow Minnehaha County to replace the Community Corrections Center with a new facility attached to the current jail. The CCC, Community Corrections Center, currently has space for two hundred and twenty-five beds, while the new attached facility will have three hundred and twenty beds for a net gain of ninety-five beds. The new facility will include a new Sallyport inmate and booking area, medical and administrative officers. These areas are all housed in the public safety building and are inadequate for the processing of over twenty thousand inmates annually. The resolution is for forty-six million dollars to finance the construction and equipping of an expanded jail, including replacement of the existing Community Corrections Center, the jail intake area, and related parking. The term of the certificates will not exceed twenty-one years, and the resolution specifies authorization of the auditor and commission chairperson to approve documents for the financing. The municipal advisor agreement is with Doherty and Company and defines the terms under which they will act as the municipal advisor to Minnehaha County with respect to the issuance of the certificates of participation. And we do have parties here today. I know who'd be willing to answer any questions that you have, or go ahead and move the motion.
Okay, we discussed this last week, and we had a briefing on it. Is there any questions for Carol or questions for people related to this subject? And if not, I would look for a motion.
I think we've answered every question.
I think we've answered every question over four years.
If not, I would move to approve the resolution.
The motion, is there a second?
This is Jean Bender here, and I second that motion.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I have a roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Yes, motion passes unanimously.
Praise the Lord.
Madam Chair, Jeff Barth here.
Commissioner Barth?
I'm going to be leaving the meeting at this time. Thank you for allowing me to participate from grandparents' state out here in Florida.
Thank you for, for checking in, Commissioner Barth.
Commissioner Hyburger, this is Jean Bender, and I will also be exiting the meeting at this point.
Okay, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, I need, I need an, a, a, a motion too, to authorize the chairman to sign the approval of the financial documents.
The municipal advisor agreement is a separate document, just for clarification of the record.
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Sheriff?
Is it appropriate to make a comment-
You can say whatever you want.
After four years?
Yeah, as long as you're nice.
My goal was that this wouldn't become the Millstead Memorial Jail Edition. But I, I do thank you, you know, it's kind of hard to, hard to thank you for this taking four years, but it, it really is appropriate, and I'm glad you took the extra time. I'm glad you went through the extra steps so that you feel assured of the importance of this project for the safety of my staff and your staff, for the safety of the public, and for the safety of the inmates who we are responsible for holding and, and, and keeping safe. So I appreciate the support. As I listened last week, that this is, you know, because of our bonds, bond status, that we're going to be able to do this, you know, for maybe ten dollars or so on a, a, a year on a hundred thousand dollar house, less than a dollar a month. And, and so, so you're, you've positioned yourself financially to be able to accomplish this, and this is a huge and important step for the safety of our community and the safety of our, of our public. And so I, I appreciate your vote and your unanimous support for moving forward with this. Thank you, commissioners.
Yeah, thank you, Sheriff. All right, with that, I think-
Madam Chair?
Bob Litz from the auditor's office. There is, is one thing that I felt was very important that the public should know, and that with the signing of this resolution, this, this forty-six million dollar bond package will be going to public sale, which means it is a competitive bid. And we'll, so we'll see how we turn out on the day of the sale.
Which will be when, Bob?
We don't, we don't have that information yet because we still have to go through a, a period of publishing and some other things here. So as soon as we, that, that date is determined, we'll certainly inform the commission.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will go on to item number eleven, which is authorize the chair to sign an amendment to the two thousand fourteen through two thousand sixteen highway union contract to change the early start times from five AM to four AM to the implement, implemented during implement, implemented weather. I can't say all that, sorry.
Good morning, commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Last week, you approved the next three-year term of the contract for the highway union, and one of the things that was in there was that we would start clearing roads at four o'clock when that is needed versus five o'clock. We still have a few weeks of winter left, be, or a few weeks of beginning winter before the new contract takes place. This is simply to amend the current contract and allow that to start immediately. So asking you to sign this contract. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve is consider a motion to authorize the highway department to per, purchase an ASU cab-over truck and weed spraying equipment in the amount of forty-one thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and sixty cents. Asuzu.
Good morning, commissioners. DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. This is an ASU cab-over truck used for weed spraying, and currently, we have an, a regular pickup, a work-duty pickup, that we use for our weed spraying, and that's in a definite need for replacement, and we have budgeted this item for two thousand and eighteen. And because of the condition of the existing vehicle, we're making this request today to use savings that we have in this year's budget and the two thousand sixteen budget and move forward with the purchase and, and replacement of the vehicle that was scheduled for replacement in two thousand eighteen. Do you have any questions about the vehicle or about the, the budgeting portion of it? I can answer them at this time.
Okay, is there a motion or any questions on the cab-over truck for weed spraying?
I'll move to approve it.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen is consider a motion to purchase the snow plows, two of them, the plow hitches, two, the, two snow wings, two ice scrapers off the state bid for a contract number one, zero, zero, seven, seven, nine, and S dash eight, six, three, five, and J craft contract number one, zero, zero, seven, seven, nine, in the amount of forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars.
Commissioners, on August seventeenth of this year, you approved the purchase of two tandem axle truck chassis and snow plow truck bodies. And along with those purchases, every time that we purchase snow plow trucks, we have to buy the snow plow truck equipment, which is what Commissioner Hyburger read off there. It's the snow plows, the plow hitches, and the snow wings, and the ice scrapers for the snow plow truck. It's the equipment that completes the snow plow vehicle. And, and typically, when we make that purchase, it goes through our department. On a department level, it's not a commission approval item because of the cost is, is a smaller cost. In this case, we've already purchased a set of, of snow plow equipment earlier in this year, and so an additional purchase of this same equipment would make us exceed the bid limits, the fifty thousand dollar bid limits by statute. And so then we are required to come to the commission for approval, to purchase off of the existing Minnesota state bid of those products. And so asking your approval to do so today.
Is there a motion? Commissioner Barth?
I don't have any problem with adding this, but would you remind me of how long it takes for these trucks to be operable because of the installation of all these add-ons?
The variable of that, the answer varies quite a bit from year to year. It can be anywhere from as little as six or seven months to up to twelve months, from the initial approval that we get from our county commission to the time in which the, the vehicle is in service. And so I would say an average is eight to ten months, and, and that's the industry standard, and I think it's probably because of some financial things that happened eight, ten years ago. There's, there's not a lot of stock inventory on, on this expensive of specialized equipment.
The other question I would have, if I might, is, it seems like the state of Minnesota, prices are always better than what we're seeing from the state of South Dakota or doing on our own. Is there any, are they the same vendors, or why are we able to buy better across the line, so to speak?
I think it might have something to do with the quantities that they purchase, and it's certainly not for every piece of equipment. There is a lot of things that we do purchase off the state of South Dakota bids that are better prices in South Dakota. But a lot of the snow removal equipment vendors are out of Minnesota, and they, and they, the state of Minnesota purchases a lot of equipment, and so they get really good prices on their state bidding. And, and the state of South Dakota, the way that they have bid their vehicles has been a little bit inconsistent or different the last couple of years. They've been trying to bid things as a turnkey project, where they just do one bid for the entire truck instead of multiple bids for a chassis and a truck body and snow equipment. And so they've done a couple of different things over the last few years, just trying to experiment, and that may have led to a little bit higher cost, just because there's, it's not the same every year. And so we've found it's the best that we just get our customized equipment off the Minnesota state bid for our, our snow plows.
Thank you.
Have a motion on this?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number fifteen is authorize the chairman to sign contract with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for county snow removal and chemical treatment of the South Dakota Highway one hundred between Madison and Maple Street.
Commissioners, this agreement is something new that, that we haven't done any time in, in recent history, anyway. The state of South Dakota approached us a month or two ago and requested an agreement in which the county forces would be responsible for paving, or not for paving, for snow plowing Veterans Parkway from Madison Street to Maple Street. And the reason for that request is they do not have any existing snow plow routes anywhere in that vicinity. And, and their discussions with the city of Sioux Falls, they learned that the city of Sioux Falls can't extend their snow plow routes outside of the municipal, municipal boundary. And so they approached us, asking if we would be able to snow plow this one mile stretch of the state highway. It's at the end of one of our county highway plow routes, and so it's pretty easy and practical for us to be able to just extend our route. And, and so we agreed to enter into a negotiation of sorts where we gave them our, our costs for what it costs us to do our snow plowing. They reviewed that and, and found it to be acceptable, and proposed this agreement that's in the, in the briefing package for you to consider for approval today.
Okay, is there any questions?
Do their standards differ from any of ours?
They do have standards that were initiated, I think, in the nineteen seventies or nineteen eighties, and they provided us a copy of that. And, and they're very similar. We don't see any cause for concern in meeting those standards. They have told me that their standards are in a little bit in need of updating, but we did provide them a copy of our snow and ice removal policy, and, and, and a lot of discussion back and forth on what our standards are, practices are, and, and neither agency sees any, any issues moving forward with the agreement.
Did they give you that in writing, that they would accept our standards, or? I'm a little-
I don't have anything in writing, other than the contract proposal that they have provided, and that's as part of your packet. In the exhibit that's provided, there is a little bit of discussion on, on the practices, and, and we do have a pretty good relationship with the local area office of the Department of Transportation. I have told them, they're, they're very well aware of what our working hours are, what our snow removal process is, and if, if for some reason, we don't meet their standard, then it's very easy to, to get out of this agreement on either party. And so one thing that is working in the county's favor, I guess, is that this road is, is a one-mile extension of an existing state highway that turns into a gravel road, and so the volume of traffic on this roadway is very minimal. And I think that ma- made everybody in the agreement feel a lot more comfortable, just because we know that there's not going to be a lot of traffic, there's not going to be a lot of people early in the morning that are needing to get through this route. And so we're, we're really not too concerned entering, entering into this agreement. Our, our four AM start time is really going to help us out in this situation where we're out there probably before anybody else in this case.
I hate to use the word road to nowhere, but what's their plan from, what's the north part? Maple? Maple. What's the plan from Maple to I-90?
From Maple to I-90, that is under contract right now, in a two-year contract from two thousand and, well, sixteen and seventeen, the grading portion and paving portion up to Rice Street. And then in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, the grading and paving of the portion from Rice Street to I-90. And so until that project- And so, until that project, this one that's under construction right now in the grading portion is completed up through Rice Street, the amount of traffic on Veterans Parkway from Madison to Maple is really going to be pretty minimal because it does, like you said, kind of go to nowhere.
Carson, do you have a comment?
Oh, I was just going to comment if Commissioner Kelly had a question about standard performance. It is defined in the agreement, and it references the state standard manual as it may be used, but really the ultimate call is a mutually agreed standard between DJ as the local representative and their, who'd be their regional person. Who is that? I don't even know, but...
It's Travis Dresson.
Anyway, it's mutual agreement, so that standard of performance, from a legal perspective, I'm not concerned with that, so.
I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And we've got a couple more for you. Authorize the chairman to sign the professional services agreement with Banner Associates Incorporated for survey, design, planning, preparation, and bidding of the 2017 bridge railing management project for, at the cost of $18,700.
Commissioners, if you remember, we completed a railing improvement project with Banner Associates last year, and that was a result of our bridge inspections that we performed on the west side of the county two years ago. And so, we received our bridge inspections within the last two months for some bridges, or for the other half of the county's bridges on the east side of county. And our intent is that we do a railing improvement project similar to the previous one, this one being on the east side of the county. And so, Banner Associates has designed a very similar project to this, as this before for us, and we look forward to working with them again. And this is using bridge maintenance funds. It's a pooled project that we have put together. It's not an identified project in our five-year plan other than it saying "bridge maintenance." And the reason that we do that is because we don't always know what the bridge reports are going to come back and tell us that we should be doing for maintenance. And so, when we receive our bridge reports from that, we decide what kind of maintenance projects we want to move forward with. And so, asking for your approval today to design a bridge railing maintenance project with Banner Associates.
Questions? Commissioner, Vennica?
DJ, when they did the first half, so to speak, did they give us an estimate of what the cost would be in the future for us to maintain those?
Maintain the railings?
Maintain all the projects, or the reconstruction, or whatever needed to be done. Is there a price, so to speak, average on what they're expecting us to invest in the future?
They did not give us an estimate when they did the previous project because these maintenance projects are really kind of difficult to estimate on the front end. And so, if it was a much larger or a bigger project in scope, we would probably enter into a preliminary engineering agreement and try to develop a scope and an estimate of that cost. We know that this is, I think, seven structures that we're looking at, and it's probably $5,000 to $10,000 per structure, maybe $10,000 per structure that we're going to be investing in the railing repairs. And we know that from experience on other railing improvements that we've done. But, long-term, the amount of money that we would invest on trying to keep those railings up to standard is probably more based on what kind of damages we see, if there's accidents, people running into the bridges, that type of thing. There's not a lot of really, not a lot of upkeep on the railings themselves once they're installed unless they're damaged by accidents or something happening to them. Did that answer your question, or was I going the wrong way with it?
Well, frankly, I'm trying to figure out what they do when they inspect a railing. Do they drive by it and say, "Yeah, that looks rusty and it's broke"?
What they typically do is they invest it, or they inspect it to see if it's constructed to standard. The standards for railings have changed very significantly over the last 10, 20, 30 years. And so, a lot of these bridges that we're looking at doing a project on, they have an older standard railing. It might be lower than what's required. It might be attached to the structure itself using an older standard. And so, with bigger and faster vehicles traveling on the bridges, those older railing types aren't going to hold up to collisions the same as what a new railing might hold up to. So, we're just getting rid of an older standard and replacing it with the new standard.
I need a motion.
That probably means you're not going to make a motion. I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 17 is consider a motion to authorize the purchase of one oil distributor off of the Minnesota state bid number P-9615 in the amount of $195,657. DJ Boothey.
Commissioners, this is a budgeted equipment purchase that we have for 2017. And the reason that I'm making the request in 2016 is because the lead time that we've learned from the manufacturer is approximately up to six months. And in order for this piece of equipment to be available for the 2017 construction season, we're trying to get a jump on the ordering of the piece of equipment. It's an oil distributor that's used as one of the key components to our paving operation in the summertime. And I had a conversation with Commissioner Hybiger yesterday about the importance of oil distributor. There's been a lot of technology improvements in oil distribution over the last 20 years, and our existing oil distributor is probably about 20 years old. And the new oil distributors are a lot safer, and they're a lot more exact on the distribution of the oil itself, which is very important to the long-term success of the asphalt pavement that you're laying down. And so, that being said, we contacted an Etnayer sales representative and learned that the local distributor is Sheehan Mac Equipment Sales. And so, working with them, we learned of the Minnesota state contract, again, that they do have good competitive pricing on. And we're requesting today to purchase off of that Minnesota state contract. And the equipment will be serviced here locally through Sheehan Mac once the equipment is received.
Is this a pretty specific or unusual piece of equipment? We didn't go out for bids on it, is that correct?
No, we personally, or our county did not go out for bids on this. We're requesting today to purchase off of another agency's competitive bid. The state of Minnesota, they did competitively bid this equipment. And so, every contractor, every government agency that has an asphalt paving operation would own an oil distributor such as one like this. And so, it's unique to a paving operation, but it is something that everybody would own as part of their paving fleet.
So, we're assuming that the Minnesota bid was, I mean, our bids aren't going to probably be any better if we went over open bid?
No, no. And whenever we are making a purchase or a request to purchase off of Minnesota state bid or the South Dakota state bid, we look regionally at other bids for the same product to make sure that we're not just requesting something that's easy to purchase off of. We want to make sure that we're getting the best deal. And so, we're very comfortable with this price. Actually, coincidentally, our budgeted dollar amount for this, I think, is within $1,000, within, less than $1,000 of what the actual cost is for this off of the Minnesota state bid. And that was put together over a year ago, and so, there's been very little cost increase over the last year from when we made our initial estimate. And our initial estimate was made based off of other competitive bids that we researched.
And this will be from your 17 budget, correct?
That's correct, yes. We won't make payment on this until we actually receive the equipment in 2017.
Additional questions? Any motion?
Your turn.
My turn. Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number 18 is consider a motion to allocate 100% of the 2016 county surplus property sales proceeds of $21,847.43 to the general fund, ASN number 13740, or allocating a specific portion to the highway fund, number or ASN 13711, with the remaining balance allocated to the general fund. On this, well, I guess I can let you take care of it, Bob.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Bob Litz, from the Auditor's Office. Sounds like, Cindy, you did most of my work for me here, so my question would be, is what's your pleasure? Do you want to put it all in the general fund, or would you like to bust it out according to where that money originally came from? $9,641.75 into highway with the remaining $12,205.68 going into the general fund. It's our perennial dilemma, folks.
It's my perennial pet peeve. I just don't like the whole philosophical issue of using highway equipment to raise money for the general fund. I think that's playing games with accounts when they're separate proceeds, if you will. So, I would like the general fund to receive whatever is not highway equipment proceeds.
That would be the general fund. In that case, the amount would be $12,205.68.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to put into highway fund $9,641.75 with the remaining balance to go to the general fund. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number 19 is authorize the chairman to sign engagement agreements with Fitch and Associates for the county's EMS system review in the amount of $39,200. Robert Wilson, good morning.
Good morning again Commissioners, Robert Wilson of the Commission Office. You'll recall on Tuesday, November 1st, you accepted a proposal submitted by Fitch and Associates to conduct a county EMS review at a cost of $39,200. This morning, we're looking for your consideration to sign the engagement agreement with Fitch and Associates to perform this work as outlined in this proposal. This proposal has been reviewed by the state's attorney's office, and again, we bring it forward at this time for your review. That amount includes travel, printing, postage, other professional fees, and activities associated with this work. It will be paid incrementally as different milestones throughout the project are achieved. And that schedule has been approved as part of your briefing material. We've got both the agreement and the original proposal that's referenced in the agreement as part of your briefing materials for your review and available for public review. And I would look for your questions or your consideration of signing that agreement.
Questions for Robert?
I would make a motion to approve the engagement agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And we have talked about that several times, so. Item number 20 is consider an appeal of the decision of the Minnehaw County Planning Commission to deny conditional use permit number 16-71 to allow the Great Bear Sand and Gravel to continue to mine sand and gravel on the property located on Section 31 of the Benton Township. Scott Anderson, good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, County Planning Director. And today you have an appeal of a conditional use permit, 1671. Jay Wright, representing Great Bear Sand and Gravel, appealed the planning commission's decision to deny conditional use permit 1671, which would be to allow for continued sand and gravel mining on the property located in 31 of Benton Township. Today is the day that the appeal is to be heard. I have included a number of packets of information for your review. Those included the planning commission minutes, several site plans. It included a PowerPoint presentation that was shown at the planning commission, and the appeal letter. I also received a letter from, and a packet of information from Great Bear Sand and Gravel dated November 14th. I included that for your review. It outlines measures which they are willing to take to address the issues that the planning commission expressed at the meeting in October. And they also submitted approximately 20 letters of support. I've also included information that was submitted to the county commission office and myself from Celia Benson. She's a concerned citizen that lives in the vicinity. She presented, she submitted a PowerPoint presentation that's also in your packet of information to review. So, I will give you a brief synopsis and history of what has occurred there. Many of you are familiar with this because you were here in 2006 or were following what the commission was doing in 2006. But, originally, the county approved a conditional use permit in 2006 to allow for sand and gravel extraction at this site. It was approved with 19 conditions, and there was significant public interest in this conditional use permit. One of the conditions that the planning commission, excuse me, recommended and the county commission approved was a sunset clause, which indicated that the mining activity could basically operate or continue, or they could do mining activities for 10 years. It would have, all the mining activity would have to conclude by December 31st of 2016, so that would be next month. Then, the applicant was given, as part of that same condition, one year, basically all of 2017, to reclaim any unreclaimed sites on the property. So, let's go through some pictures that I have. This is the general, this is the overall property that is owned by the applicant. It's about 200 acres. The mining activity is only occurring on a small portion of this, a 30, 40-acre parcel or portion of this overall 200 acres. This is the site plan proposed by the, or shown by the applicant. It sort of shows, in the middle, you can see the disturbed ground, and that's where the mining activity is occurring. This is the haul road, so sort of to the back, you can see the mining activity. This is up on the hill on 467th, and it shows, it's looking down onto the mining activity. You can see the, much of the area was farmed. Once again, this is on that hill looking down onto the site. This is an adjacent neighbor. This is the haul road going back to the mine. This is the paved portion of 467th that leads from Highway 38 to the south. This is a slide that shows some of the alligator-ing and some of the road condition of that paved road. As part of the conditions of approval, the applicant was required, at the county commission meeting when this was appealed, the county commission added a condition that they pave the section of Township Road, 467th, that, sorry, 466, that led from Highway 38 to the haul road. And they did that, and it's been 10 years, and off and on, there's been issues with the road.
Is this a county or township road?
It's a township road. It's the border, it's the township section line that divides Benton from Hartford Township.
But, it's an asphalt road?
It is. They have asphalted a portion of the road from the haul road down to Highway 38. This shows, this is basically from the haul road looking north towards Highway 38. You can see Goose RV in the background, and there was, when I took the picture, they were combining, and you can see the, one of the tractors pulling a load of grain into Highway 38. And that's what I have for pictures. I'll take it back to the site plan. The planning, once again, just to reiterate, the planning commission recommended denial of this, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. I know that there are representatives for Great Bear Sand and Gravel, and there's also, I think, Ms. Benson is also in the audience.
This is not a public hearing, but it is an appeal, and so, I will be letting both sides, both the proponents and the opponents, speak. Is there any questions for Scott right off the bat, or do you want to hear? Go ahead.
Just a question on the maintenance of the road. Has the township had any input into the conversation about their responsibility for maintaining and repairing that road?
They, the owner-operator, the sand and gravel pit have an agreement with Hartford Township. This is, it's basically, it's a section line between the two townships. Hartford Township maintains that portion of the road. They have met with in the past, and recently also met with Hartford Township to discuss the maintenance of the road, and they've hammered out an agreement for the maintenance.
But, you did say originally there was a 10-year agreement, and now they have tried to extend that? Is that what?
There was a 10-year sunset clause for the overall mining operation. And now, they, and they can address why, why they would like to still continue sand and gravel operation. There's still sand and gravel deposits there. They'd like to extract them. They feel that they've invested money into the site. They'd like to continue to get some of that sand and gravel out of there. They also have gone through the owner... They also have gone through, the owner, landowner, has gone through, I think, one or two different operators, and then that combined with the economic slowdown that occurred in 2008, '09, '10, they didn't sell as much gravel or take as much out of there as they originally thought that they would.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly.
Couple of questions. One, what kind of traffic is on that road other than the mining traffic?
Well, there, there's your typical agricultural activity. There, about three or four years ago, we approved a, an industrial use on that property, so you, you could see, you can see the Comcast, the concrete business that's located. They are also accessing or using that road as a, the main access into their property. So, and then in addition, you have residential use out there. You have some acreages that people live on.
And there aren't very many township asphalt roads in this county, are there?
Very few, and that was one of the, that was one of the things, one of the issues that the property owner hammered out with the township on how that road would be maintained and who would pay for it, and...
And there's been no complaints on that?
There has been in the past.
Okay. Then the last question is, oh, wait a minute. Oh, you said he met, he, since the Planning Commission meeting, he has sent a letter rectifying all or most of the issues. Have, have they met what, what the concerns of the Planning Commission?
Well, the concerns that were raised at the Planning Commission meeting really dealt with the condition of the road of 466th, the potential for dust. There was some discussion on dust, and there was some discussion on traffic and tarping. So, they have addressed, in my opinion, they have addressed the concerns that the Planning Commission raised.
Okay, that's why I need to know. Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay. The people who are in favor of this project, if you want to speak first? If you just identify yourself and give your address for the record, please. Thank you.
Name's Harold Gaiden. I'm the owner of Great Bear Sand and Gravel. I have applied to get this, I took over this pit for, wait a minute, the owner's three years ago, and, and he had other operators in there prior to me, and when we got tied into the deal, we didn't realize that there was a sunset law in this pit. So, I've got three years invested in this pit, and I've, I've taken over and straightened it all out. I've fixed the road the last three years in a row. We made, met with all the townships, all three townships in the area, and I, they're all favorite keeping the pits open. We've come to agreement with Hartford Township that we'd put four inches of asphalt on the road instead of two that was under the first time, four more inches, so the road could stand up for the term that we want to haul out of there. We estimated somewhere around eight years of gravel left into the pit, so we asked for 10 years so we'd have enough time. Like they said, the reason the pit didn't get mined out the first time is they opened it in 2006, and from 2007 to 2011, most of the sand and gravel goes into Sioux Falls community, and the housing market and stuff was really slow, so the previous manager that managed the pit did not sell near what they thought. And then, but that guy went broke, and then I ended up filling in after another guy got in there and couldn't get it done. We've tried to address all the problems since we've been in the pit for the last three years. They've had very little complaints, other than the first year I was there, they called me about the road, and then I addressed the problem. We took care of it the first year. It's really hard for us to be in the sand and gravel business if we don't have a gravel pit. We've been in the sand and gravel business for, I've been in the sand and gravel business since 95. We've reclaimed over 200 acres of sand and gravel pits. We reclaimed a site down by Bearsford where the interstate did a crushing that sat ugly for the last 10 years, and we went and did a job in Bearsford last year, and we recycled the concrete in there, and we cleaned up the whole site. I've been active in all kinds of reclaiming jobs and stuff that we can, we'll get the job done and we'll do it good. I've been in business since '82. I've been in the community of Sioux Falls since '74, and I plan on spending many more years here. I want your support. Thanks.
Do you have any questions for Harold? I don't think so. Anyone else wants to speak?
I guess I do have a question. I, I don't know if it's the proper time, but if, I'll tell you where I'm going, is perhaps sending us back to the Planning Commission, simply because I hate to kind of override what they have gone through, and since then, you have had communications and resolved maybe most of the differences. If you were given, because of the late date, because theoretically, you got to cease operation on December 31st, is that correct?
Right.
And the fact that, that you didn't know that was in there is kind of your problem, not ours, but...
I understand that.
But if you were given like a six-month extension on this thing, and then take it back to planning, would that, so that there's plenty of time in there, and then we're just bumping everything for six months, would that work, or would that be a possibility? If, if in fact, the intent is to send it back to planning, but we've got to give you some time, because it'll, you wouldn't be on until a December meeting, and...
Well, we, we'd like to know before April at least, because we have to start preparing materials and stuff for the following year if we're going to run a gravel pit. You know, we'll have to crush gravel, and we'll have to get rocks sorted, and by, by March, we'll be ready to operate out of that pit again, so we'd like to keep it...
Well, the Planning Commission would probably, I mean, you'd have an answer in January as to where it's going to go. Do you continue mining during the winter?
We, we have stockpiles, and we tend to sell some gravel during the winter, but we actually really don't usually do much of the crushing part and stuff like that.
I'm wondering about the people that are bidding out their, their gravel and their stuff, like the county's...
We're bidding jobs already.
Right, so they're bidding for this next year already, so if you delay them, that's going to mess up bidding process for the next year.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll be, we'll be bidding quite a few jobs in February and March, and it will be important that we do know which way we're going.
One year makes more sense, for instance. I mean, it may be resolved, you know, January, and maybe the Planning Commission would be acceptable to just saying, I don't know, but giving you a year would allow you to do the...
What, you're, you're telling me you want to give me another year to mine, and then...
I'm just throwing this out as an option, but yeah, so, so that you could do your bids for this year.
Yeah, so we'd be able to mine this year, and then next fall, we'd have to start again, or throughout the year, we'd get it worked out with the Commission.
That would be pretty much what I'm thinking, yeah.
Well, if we can't, if we can't decide it today, I'll, I'll do anything with Ken so we can. We'd prefer, if we could get it done, so we have a chance to make a long-term plan, you know, it's, I guess if...
My, my thought is you wouldn't pave that road unless you know you've got a 10-year plan, because there's no, the money doesn't work for you.
Right, right. We need to know so we, we can address the road problem, because, you know, we fixed the road for the winter, but that road will not stand up for 10 years of hauling, and...
No, and I, I'm not...
No, but I mean, you know, and if we run another year on the road, it'll be broke up, and I put $10,000 into the road to fix it this year. So, we want to make sure that we, if we're going to go and do the road and stuff, that we can get it, so...
Well, I guess I'm just trying to figure what a hardship would...
Why don't we listen to both sides before we make any of those decisions?
All right, I'll go ahead, yeah.
Commissioner, if you've got any questions? Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor, in favor of this? Okay, now I will take comments from the pro, from the opponents. Please do not repeat.
There's one one in favor.
Are you in favor of it?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay, sorry. Go ahead.
My name is Carl Carlson. I own Semcast Pipe and Precast, or located adjacent to the pit property, and we've been in our location for about a little over two and a half years. Harold has always been a very good neighbor. I can attest that he has maintenance the road every fall, because I can see his crews out there removing or replacing asphalt. There are, certainly there are trucks there, but all of the land around us on our site is zoned industrial. We are located at an interstate access. Highway 38 also intersects I-90. It's an appropriate spot for industrial uses. Gravel is certainly a necessary construction material. In fact, this year, Harold supplied a Minnehaha County job that was only a couple miles down the road, and certainly that saved the county, Minnehaha County, a great deal of money because of his proximity to the project. Otherwise, that material would have had to been trucked a lot further, and would have cost the county a lot more money. So, I can attest, he's been a very good neighbor to us, and I think he runs a good pit. Everything seems fairly, not fairly, very organized, and it seems very well-run, so... And I do think if you look at the pits that are in Sioux Falls, or the pipe plant that is in Sioux Falls, those are both, you know, there's a concrete pipe plant located in the center of Sioux Falls, not us, and there's also a very large quarry near the fairgrounds that's located in the middle of Sioux Falls. And obviously, these businesses are appropriate for our community. They help our community grow, and myself and Harold are both located out in a very rural area with very, very, very few neighbors around, and we, we need these types of businesses to build and grow our community. And at the same time, you can go to Concrete Materials, and between their large pits, they have a road that frankly, doesn't, looks much worse than the road that is, goes to the pit. I think Harold does a really good job of maintaining it, and East 39th Street North, where there is a concrete pipe plant now, in the middle of Sioux Falls, up until maybe eight or 10 years ago, was a gravel road. So, I, I just want you to know this. I, in my personal belief as a citizen, I think that we need gravel pits, and that's an appropriate location, and I do recognize that if you built a home there 25 or 30 years ago, that you'd be upset about this traffic, but this is an interstate access, and you're going to have commercial and industrial uses at an interstate access, so... And above all, Harold is a very good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Are there any questions for Mr. Carlson? Okay. Is anybody else who wants to speak in favor, in favor? Good morning, and give your name and address too, please. Thank you.
My name is Gary Meyer. I live on 26154, 466th Avenue, which is right out from the pit, and I'm not here to speak in favor or against the gravel pit. I'm here to ask you to consider your decision. Forgive me, words escaped me, so I wrote them down, if I do a little reading here. At the planning, at the last Planning Commission, it was voted against extending the mining pit, but they didn't take time to discuss the repercussions. First, it's the paved road. The gravel company, whoever's in there, is required to turn it back to gravel when they're finished, but they've already allowed another business, Chemcast, that has heavy truck traffic, to build on that road. There's no provision in Chemcast's permit that requires them to keep up the road. So, how are you going to get rid of the gravel company and keep the road paved, because the township doesn't have equipment or means to maintain a paved road? And the Township Board also says you can't have a business on a gravel township road. Now, I don't know if this is true, and I've also heard a rumor that there is another business buying a spot out there as well. And second, how are you going to have economic development without gravel? You get tax revenue from every load of gravel that comes out of these pits, and every home that is built, every home and business that's built in the county uses gravel, so you can't have economic development unless you have gravel. And I can't understand why you don't return some of that money to improve the conditions for the residents on 466th Avenue and the surrounding roads. Take, for instance, the new Walmart on Highway 38. I bet they didn't have to build their own four-lane road with stoplights and turning lanes. And so, why should the businesses that you approve out on 466 have to build their own road? I think that townships, the counties, and the states need to consider that when they open up these businesses. And how much of the tax revenue that you, that you get from the gravel pit and the cement plant have been spent on 466th Avenue? We've been living next to that for 10 years, and they have been good neighbors, but I don't see any money coming back from the tax revenue that they generate, and I think you could improve the conditions for people out there if you'd return some of that tax money on our road. And what about the revenue you get from Walmart? Walmart couldn't have been built without gravel, and if you close the gravel pit, Walmart is still there. They're still generating revenue. Again, 466th Avenue sees none of that. There are four school buses that travel 466th Avenue every day, and if you haven't traveled that road after a soaking rain or a slopping snow, you should, because there's hardly room on that road for one vehicle, let alone a school bus and a truck. And these trucks are not just gravel trucks, so even though you close down the gravel mining operation, you aren't resolving any traffic issues. There's 18-wheelers, there's pickups pulling trailers, and these are from the gravel pits, from Dakota Access Pipeline, delivery trucks, grain trucks, construction trucks, garbage trucks, utility trucks, gas trucks, plus all the increased traffic that we've got on that road, because Hartford is growing and the surrounding communities are growing. This road is no longer a rural country road, and I think the county, the township, and the state need to get together and figure out what they're going to do. The answer is not easy. It's an expensive road to deal with. And I think the one place to start would be dust control. Even if the gravel pit is out there, and you say they all have to go north, there is no law saying they can't go south. We've tried to flag down trucks before and say, we've got signs up there that say no dump trucks, and they'll say, this is a public road, you can't ban them, and they are correct on that. And if you go out there, after we haven't had rain for a couple weeks, just try following a vehicle within 50 to 100 feet. You can't, because you can't see behind them. It's a dust cloud. And on a calm summer night, you can see just a ribbon of dust from the traffic. Used to be there wasn't much traffic out there, and so we could deal with it, but as more and more traffic comes out there, it gets worse. Take, for example, when the bridge over the interstate was closed down right south of Hartford. All that traffic came out our way. And what's going to happen when they try and build Highway 100 through Alice for the West Side Corridor? Traffic's going to come to 466th Avenue again to avoid the construction, because that's the link between T and L, or between T and Lenox to the interstate 90. So, I guess in conclusion, I'm asking you to do two things. If you deny the permit, you need to figure out who is going to pave that road for Chemcast. If you award the extension, I'm asking for some discussion on using tax revenue to improve the situation, and some discussion with the township, and the state, and what can be done for safety of those using 466th Avenue, and also Highway 38, and what can be done for the residents who live on that road. And for starters, how about working with the state to slow down the traffic on Highway 38? That intersection is nasty with all the traffic, and it's not just from gravel trucks. Like I mentioned before, there's a lot of traffic, and at 65 miles an hour, you don't have a lot of time to get in and out of there. It's a proven fact that you can't stop trucks from using that road, and so I think that's just putting a Band-Aid on the issue. I think the state and the county need to do something about it. So, two things, the asphalt road and our solutions to handle the extra traffic. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I will tell you that the county doesn't get any sales tax revenue whatsoever, so we only get property tax. That's all we get, so ongoing sales taxes isn't, isn't a help for us, but...
How about a wheel tax?
We do have some wheel tax, and, and townships get that part of that money, so... Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of this? Okay, then we'll go to those opposed to it, and I think Mrs. Benson is the only opponent that's going to speak, and she's got a PowerPoint for us to...
There's a PowerPoint on our...
Yep, it is. It's under Cecilia Benson.
Is it a separate item?
Yeah, it's a separate item under Cecilia Benson. All right, thank you. Thank you, Robert.
My name is Celia Benson. I live on Robyn Drive, which is really on 467th, so I see that picture when I drive on 467th. Furthermore, my sister's brother and I own a farm in Section 32, which has been homesteaded in our family since the 1870s. When I left the planning meeting in October, I found I still had many questions, just as Gary Meyer alluded to. just as Gary Meyer alluded to in his remarks. I put together this presentation to help me understand and hope that you find some of the remarks here useful. In addition to that picture, here is a picture that was in the Department of Environment Natural Resources file. There's, there's been references to the need for annual reclamation report filings. So, I went to the database in this Department of Environment Natural Resources database. And this is a picture that was attributed to Dakota Earthworks. So, that's a picture of the Great Bear Sand and gravel that was in that database. Operationally, I was curious when Mr. Gustafson appeared at the hearing, or the planning commission meeting in October, and was wondering, he mentioned that he lived in the Black Hills. And I was curious about the linkage in Black Hills and gravel pit here in Minnehaha County. And I did find his website where they are owners of a heavy constructors company, which does have a division of excavating specialists. Further, in the planning commission meeting, there seemed to be some question as to how many operators there had been in this particular gravel pit between 2006 and 2016. And again, based on that database in the Department of Environmental Natural Resources, for this legal description and for this time period, there were three annual reports filed. One by someone called TNR Aggregates, one for Dakota Earthworks with some notation of 119, 2012, and then one for First Rate Excavate. Both Mr. Anderson from the Planning Office and Gary Meyer have talked about the stipulation with the county commission for this initial permit. And these are some of the issues that the neighbors have had with non-compliance. One has to do with hours of operation. You've heard the comments about the hard service condition, tarping of loads, and then the use of 466 South as a haul load. And I think we're still at this point unclear. I just spoke with Robert Pearson, who's on the Hartford Township Board last night. And he said that they have an agreement that the gravel trucks will not go south. So, I still am unclear myself. It is not one of the stipulations by the county commission. But evidently, according to someone from a supervisor from that township board, it is an agreement or an understanding that as a haul road, they will use 261st West, or they'll go on Highway 38 North. And Commissioner Kelly, you had some questions about 466th Avenue. I'm afraid, since you're early in your, you're run through your agenda quite fast, I don't know if Rhonda Erickson will be able to attend this meeting this morning. She also lives on 466th Avenue. But bullet point two here talks, whoops, I'll move over. Talks about an accident on 466 between 261st and 267 resulting in hospitalization. And that was, if I'm understanding her correctly, that was in 2016. So, there was a gravel truck that was going south. Whether it's against someone's agreement or not, but that's our understanding that they are not to be taking that road as a haul road. There is an understanding...
Do you know if that truck belonged to this company?
I do not know that. And that's, it's unfortunate that Rhonda isn't here at this time to, to answer that question.
Oh, there you are, okay.
Do you want her to answer that now?
No.
Okay. In some literature that I looked at about aggregate companies, they talk about one way to mitigate or to add to safety issues is to have acceleration and deceleration lanes. And that is something that you heard Gary Myers allude to in his remarks. And he also talked about the increase in the last 10 years in that area in terms of traffic. Older people coming from Salem and so on going to Walmart. The increase in the enrollment in the two school districts where you've got 14, 15-year-olds driving cars to school, and school buses and so on. This next page is just intended to show that the planning commission, in their efforts to look at the future of the county, do recognize the value of ag lands just as an aesthetic asset, and also then the soil being an important part of the county. Also, but in the planning, they do also recognize the value of sand and gravel deposits. And so, then they list the, four of the stipulations. And that has to do with this conditional use process meeting. But also, the post-excavation land uses. And that's what I'm seeing as a repeated emphasis in all the literature and departments I look at, is this emphasis on reclamation and post-excavation land uses. And then the other point here was minimize conflict with neighbors, which was part of the reason for the 19 stipulation. My next slide was just an attempt to show that within the excavation aggregate community, there is a national institute foundation where they are aware of the issues involved with aggregate mining and their attempt to mediate these negative impacts. And again, one of those first and foremost is reclamation. I talked to people from the East Dakota Water Development District and learned, as you see in this slide, that their concern mostly is with gas being spilled and what that might do to water sources. You saw on that very first slide that this mining area is very near the Skunk Creek, which flows into the Sioux River. And up in Lake County, they have addressed these type of issues. One of the stipulations here for Great Lakes sand and gravel is no fuel storage on site. But then there's questions about if there's ever any waste oil, how is it collected? And any machinery left, what about any possible spillage there? I did go back, as I said, and look at the Department of Environment and Natural Resources annual filings, the reclamation annual filings in that database. And TNR was considered inactive, and there really were no figures or amounts in that public file. Dakota Earthworks, again, was considered inactive, and there were no figures in that file. But there were the three photos, one of which I showed at the beginning. And then the filing for First Rate Excavate, which is the current operator, was June 16th. And it showed acres mined at that time was 60 and a half, 68 and a half, with four and a half reclaimed, with 64 yet to be complained, to be reclaimed. And that had been one of the questions by the planning commission when they met in October, is how much is left to be mined? The next slide shows, just for comparable purposes, again, because of the emphasis on my part on reclamation, Friesen, which has a site only two miles down the road, showed in their annual report that they had mined 48 acres, but reclaimed half of it. And Merlin Roy's, which is one mile up the road, had mined 23 acres and reclaimed almost all of it. In the October meeting, Mr. Golden had pointed out that he does do a good job of reclamation. He alluded to property on First Rate, on Rice. So, I found these pictures, again, at the database for the Department of Environment Natural Resources. And this does show that 149 acres mined, 138 nearly reclaimed, with just 11 left to be reclaimed. And what you'll see here is that this happens to be an area where there's growth and there's houses moving in. But then you'll also see the mounds of gravel. And it would be interesting to learn, you know, at what time period and how those were going to be taken care of. But you do see that there is black dirt and there is grass growing. And so, there is a, a good reclamation there. The next slide, again, focuses on reclamation. And this is taken from the Minnehaha County Commission Stipulation Number 15. And it's taken, there's a few words before that. But it says, "Reclamation shall be in accordance with the plan filed with the state and outlined in the application, and all reclamation shall be completed by December 31st, 2017." When I made calls to the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, I was not able to learn as much as I thought I needed to know about this plan. One person told me that there is no plan on file at the state in his office. But then I talked to someone else, saying, "Well, there must be a plan there somewhere." And I was referred to 45-6B-15. That does say that the application has to be filed. But then this next sentence, I want to be clear. When it says, "Reclamation work is between the county and the landowner," that was not out of 45-6B. That is a statement from someone I talked to at the department there. 45-6B does say that the reclamation plan does need to be filed with the local register of deeds, but it does not have to be kept. It only has to be recorded if the applicant requests that it be recorded. And once the commission approves the permit, if it hasn't been recorded, then it is not kept. So, that would make sense if the owner did not ask for it to be recorded, that it would not be on file. Keeping in the theme of concern about reclamation, I grew up in this area. I went to a country school just across the street from these two, across the road from these two sites. When you are at the intersection of 466th and Highway 38, which is again, as you've heard, very near the Interstate Exchange or overpass, underpass, one mile up is Benton Street. And on the Hartford Township side of that, you'll see this one picture, which shows what had once been Harry Van Kikreks's pasture, and is now what had been a gravel pit that's been allowed to fill up with water and trees. The other direction, in that same intersection, is, again, you'll see water and trees of a gravel pit that had been there. It was not there in the 60s. That was Big Joe Johnson's farm. So, these are two current areas that, because there was no reclamation, this is the condition they're in now. They're farmed all around, right up to the edges, but their potholes are of water. And the last picture here is, one of the neighbors told me about the concern they have of another site. This is in Wayne Township, which would be one mile north of Ellis and one mile west. And you'll see the condition of that inactive mine site there. In conclusion, I just want to say that the owners and operators of Great Bear have not demonstrated willingness between 2006 and last month to adhere to many of the stipulations they agreed to with either this commission or the Hartford Township Board. Further, standards set by the state and/or national excavation foundations indicate an expectation by the public for better stewardship and accountability from excavation companies. I understand the need for sand and gravel. I really do. But I'm asking for a more cooperative and collaborative approach taken by the excavation companies. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Benson? Scott, I just have a question before we go back to the proponents to rebuttal on reclamation. Scott and I talked about this yesterday. Do you want to come up just a second? And my question was, because this is item number, reclamation was... I don't see which number it is right now. But that, that here, I think it's, is it 15? That if the mining operation was concluded in January 1st, 2017, they have until December 31st, 2017 to start reclamation. So, they're not, under our ordinance, they're not required to do any reclamation up until they shut down that mining in January, and then they have one year to complete it. So, if they did have a plan, it might not be filed until after the 1st of January.
That certainly could be one option. And then, all of next year, it was the understanding that, you know, we could go out and monitor and sort of gauge the progress of, of the reclamation. And so, that, that is also another reason why that condition was written that way. So, we would have plenty of time to continue to monitor the reclamation.
Okay, thank you. I give the proponents an opportunity to speak again. And if you have anything you want to comment about what was said against the mine, you get to, you get to finish it up before the commission makes any decisions.
Yeah, when she was talking that I am the owner of First Rate Excavate, too. I'm part owner. And, and we have a good history of reclaiming mines. Lot of this mine here that has not been reclaimed has already got clay deposits and stuff back in place, but we have not put the black dirt back yet. For the simple reason that we're mining an area and we're stockpiling on some of those areas. So, it is not a lot of work to reclaim this pit. And all the black dirt is on site, and there is no rubble on that site, because we're not allowed to take rubble in it. And the storage tanks do come in and out with our trucks. Plus, when the mining crews, the, the oil company brings a secured tank and stores the tank for our generators and stuff that while we're there mining. Otherwise, the field goes back and forth, we don't store it on site.
Okay, was there any, yeah. Any questions for, for the...
Just a question. She indicated that, or someone indicated that there were discussions with the township, and there was an oral agreement or a written agreement? Do you have such an agreement with the township?
Yes, we, we met, I'll kind of go over all these deals we had here. On the Blacktop Road, we addressed that with the township on putting in four inches new asphalt. We figured if it's gonna take 10 years to finish mining, it would take four inches asphalt to hold that road up. We met with the township about the, the speed limit on the road. They agreed that we could lower it to 30 miles an hour on that stretch of road to keep the, the traffic slowed down for the safety issues. We had an agreement that we'd put up another sign at our, on our hall where saying, "All trucks have to go north to get onto the county road," I mean, state highway. So, they go on state highway or interstate and go from there. So, they do not go south on the road. Hence, traffic, road. We addressed the tarping deal. The Great Bear Sand and Gravel would take care of any tarps trucks they lease to do. Great Bear don't own trucks, but they do lease trucks. So, if we lease trucks, we'll use tarp trucks. And, and in the reclaiming, we're, like I say, we got quite a few acres that are ready for black dirt, but we won't put black dirt on until we're done stocking the material on it.
So, item number 19 says that the trucks that are owned by the applicant, you don't own any trucks, you're just leasing trucks. And so, those are the ones that you're asking now to tarp.
Great Bear Sand and Gravel leases their trucks. They don't own the equipment, we lease the equipment, so...
Okay.
But we can lease trucks with tarps on.
So, you're, yeah, you're working with that person, the lease, the leasing, okay. Okay, any other questions?
I just have one question. This might be not fair, but the picture that was given of the Wayne Township section that is an inactive mine with all the, frankly, cement and garbage on it, that's not your property.
That's not our property.
Okay.
Yeah, I have, we have, Great Bear Sand Gravel has two pits in city limits of Sioux Falls. One's on Rice and Cleveland, it's a recycle yard where we recycle all the concrete. And that's where we do take all of our concrete and we recycle it right in town. And we also have a sand pit right below Great Bear Ski Lodge.
Thank you.
And we operate both them in the city limits of Sioux Falls.
Okay.
Ms. Erickson, did you want to say anything? Sorry. Okay. You have to come to the microphone, give your name and your address.
Rhonda Erickson.
Can you pull the microphone down a little bit? Thank you.
It's Rhonda Erickson, 26147-466th Avenue. We're about a quarter mile south of the gravel pit. And I guess, for me, it's always been that road's safety. We have accidents quite often on 466. It's called Roller Coaster Road. I'm gonna kind of reinforce what Gary said. But it's not wide enough for a truck and a vehicle going any more than maybe 10 miles an hour. And if it's, conditions aren't perfect, it's not good at all. I've seen buses and cars so close that it just completely scares me to death. But I think, too, the one thing that we haven't really discussed, Cindy, you had mentioned, you know, are these your trucks? He is providing product for construction workers and contractors all over the, probably the eastern half of the state. He could. And what that means is that he has no control over those trucks and what they do. And that's where we sometimes have issues, too. We will call, and we will vent, and it's always been, "It's not our truck." Well, you're representing, you know, the, the business, and those trucks are hauling out volumes of trucks. I'm still trying to get a handle on how... I'm still trying to get a handle on how many. But when you're looking at a busy summer, there could be, you know, a hundred trucks a day. And I may be wrong with that number and stuff. We probably have to get a more accurate count. But when you're looking on that, that's two-way trips there and back. And they're blocking that Highway thirty-eight. They're trying to come out. The other thing that happens with them is because of the pace, they come out and they actually swerve into the other lane to make that corner appropriately. And so if we're coming down, when I'm going to my home, those trucks are actually coming out into my lane. I'm having to stop so that they can swing around. And speed limits, when you're talking about a heavy truck, for them to get up to a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit or thirty mile an hour, none of them are going that fast because of their loads. So a speed limit thirty-five doesn't really mean anything to us because they, with a weighted truck, should not be able to go that fast on that length of the road. So I guess my, I guess my comments is safety. It scares me when you see several trucks lined up waiting to get out into Highway thirty-eight. There's curves, that road is hard to see. You actually have to kind of turn a little bit when you hit that, or that entrance from four sixty-sixth to Highway thirty-eight so you can see both directions. And I just, I just worry that we're waiting for something really, really horrible to happen, so.
Thank you. Scott, could I ask you another question? Have we had DOT look at that intersection? Because that's their responsibility on Highway thirty-eight, not ours.
There was a lot of discussion about the safety of Highway thirty-eight back in two thousand and six. And DOT supplied information to the Planning Commission and County Commission at that time that said that there was adequate site distance, both east and west on that portion of Highway thirty-eight. They felt, DOT felt that the traffic volumes, even with the additional traffic of a sand and gravel operation, would not warrant any kind of turning lane or D cell lane or anything. This is not unusual. We had the same issue, if you remember, a couple of years ago up at Renner. We asked DOT to look at that. They are very rigid in their interpretation of, of safety and what constitutes the need for additional measures to be taken.
Could we ask DOT to look at it again since it's been since two thousand and six? And now we have Comcast out there too, that maybe they could just address that intersection again and just give us a report on their findings and that.
I certainly could, if you'd like.
I mean, it's not a part of the conditions, but that's something that we could do too, just to look at that further.
Yes.
I think we've heard all the testimony, and so discussion on the commission side.
Well, I'm going to go back to what, you know, what I was originally talking about. I'm not trying to squelch this request because there, there is a need for sand and gravel and, and pits always bother people, I suppose. But I do have a concern of overriding the Planning Commission decision because I think that's what we charge them with. However, there has been several things that have happened since the commission meeting, from what I understand, there's some correspondence, that, that does change. Ten, ten years is a significant increase. I mean, it's going to a whole new contract. And I, I would really be reluctant to have the three of us make the decision on this thing first. You know, perhaps based on the, on the business problems that he's got, that a, a one-year extension would, would allow him to, to, and I, I do this only because of the timing. Because it won't be on the Planning Commission until, yeah, December meeting, I would believe. And so I, I, that kind of puts him into.
They don't have a December meeting. They do not have a December meeting.
So it'll be twenty seventeen, and at that time, they are supposed to be into the reclamation project. I, I do think that, and there's considerable expense on the road. I would like to see it back to the Planning Commission. Let them go back through this thing. I hate to do it because, I mean, you've got to go through the whole process again. But send it back to Planning Commission and let staff and the, and the Planning Commission look at this again based on current information. You know, I thought the, I thought the presentations, Mrs. Benson and, and Mr. Meyer were, were excellent. And, and I, I do think that it, it just needs some further research. There was a comment, I can't remember by whom, that perhaps part of it wasn't researched enough. But this is a growing area out there. And, and, you know, as farming becomes tougher and, and property's still valuable because of housing, we're going to see more of it. So I, I, at this time, I'm not ready to make a ten-year decision based on what I know. So that's where I'll be going with the motion. But I welcome your comments, both you and Gerald.
Any comments?
Well, it does seem like there has been some progress towards getting this resolved, potentially. Traffic is always an issue, and traffic is an emotional thing. And as soon as all of us see one accident, we want change, which I understand. But we can't stop growth either. And this is an area that, being this close to Highway thirty-eight and the kind of property it is, is a gravel pit, regardless of how you look at it. Will it be reclaimed at some point back to the way it was? I have confidence that they evidently have a good, good reputation, and they have black dirt on site when it does need to be done. But are we cutting off a business for a few years so that they can't finish the mission of the organization, if you will, to get this pit completely mined out? Yes, we would be. I, I don't think we want to put anyone out of business, but we certainly need more information than what we have. I think the Department of Transportation suggestion's a good one. I don't know if they'll do anything. The other question I have is, and Scott, you might have to help me with this one. Who really has the enforcement ability on reclamation? Is it D E N R or is it the county?
Ultimately, it's our responsibility, it's the county.
So we'd end up in court if it doesn't work correctly. I, this is a tough one, but I think that I would be in favor of extending their permit for another year and hopefully getting the sides together to come to some conclusion involving the township, the county. I don't think the state's going to do a whole lot of reconstruction at this point, but they may help us with the Department of Transportation's vehicle count and all that kind of stuff. So if we could defer it for a length of time so that the gentleman can continue to do business, but the neighbors also have some support in making sure that those things are going to change.
I'll give you my two cents.
You know, worth a nickel today.
No, it's not worth much. I have, I've read all these documents and I've gone through all the pictures, and they have, they have now complied with all of the, or have plans to comply with every one of the stipulations that were set down. I did speak with Scott some, and he also told me that, I could let you speak for yourself, Scott, but that everything was complied with what was concerns on the Planning and Zoning Commission that they had brought to them. I don't see any reason not to approve it. If we have DOT come in and talk and look at that spot, I don't see why we would defer it for a year. If we defer it a year, he's not going to pave that road. And then that gives him one yet less year on his investment in that proper, in that road that we're going to require him to construct, which really, I know that happened a long time ago, isn't entirely fair because he's not the only person that uses that road, but yet he's paying for that construction of a half a mile. And we all know how expensive it is to redo a tar road. It's extremely expensive. I think by paving that, this next year, we'll have a better road, at least that, for that quarter of mile, and not having the traffic going south at all. It's the township's responsibility to address that road going south. If that road is too narrow, or if it needs better gravel or better maintenance, they do receive money. They also were increased the amount of money that they got for townships this last year. And if it's a township issue, we need to have a discussion with them about keeping their road because they do get money to take care of their roads. And so I would suggest that we move forward with this because I don't see any reason to withhold it because they have met all of the criteria that were set out.
Do we have a written agreement though? Or anything in writing that says that they have agreed to this? Because all I've heard at this point is it's kind of an oral agreement. Is that correct?
I don't know who wants to address it, either you or Scott.
One of the letters that came from Hartford Township, we met with the township board and they all signed it.
Oh, yeah, there's, there is, there's twenty letters in here.
Right.
One from Hartford Township, they all, I went through the township meeting and they had all signed it, everyone.
Yeah, it's page twenty-five of our fifty-one pages that lists all of the, all of those changes that they've made. There are six more. And it's been signed.
Cindy?
Yes.
I just want to clear up. We're not, the defer doesn't mean we're deferring action for a year. And at least in my mind, what it says is that because of the business climate, because of the uniqueness of, of what they have to do in their bidding in March and to provide gravel, that we need to give them a year. Could be nine months, I don't know. But give them a year to, to continue operation. It would just mean the reclamation would occur in twenty eighteen. At the worst case scenario, it would be that reclamation would occur in twenty eighteen instead of twenty seventeen. I do think though that, that it needs to go back to the Planning Commission. I think, again, it's just, you know, the timing is bad on this thing. If, if this was in August or something like this, I think, you know, this might be a different discussion. But, but I, it's, it's not a deferral of the decision. It's a defer for a year. I won't be here, but I, I mean, I believe that Planning Commission will take this up in January and that then the commission would, if the commission got involved, if it wasn't resolved and the commission got involved, then, then we would take it up, you would take it up early in the year if there's a, if there's a appeal. So I, I, I don't want to make it sound like we're just putting this down on the road twelve months. We're not. We're just allowing them to continue to operate as a business for another year, to continue their business plan until we get this resolved. Frankly, I will not support approving it, which throws it to next week. But either way, I, I just, I, I think we can act now and let everybody get their, let Mrs. Benson get involved in this thing, let the other neighbors get involved in this thing and, and perhaps come up with a reasonable settlement on this situation. It's, it's going to take a compromise, there's no question about that.
Maybe I can throw out a, a suggestion that might address Commissioner Kelly's concerns. One option that the County Commission could take would be to remand this back to the Planning Commission to their January meeting. And at that time, they could, if they feel that the applicant has met the concerns, they would, could take action to recommend approval of it with the new conditions. It's likely, given what, what I've seen and, and sort of experienced with this item, is that it's going to be appealed back to you again, and it'll be in front of you again in February. Because I, I, I think that whatever action the Planning Commission takes is not going to satisfy the neighbors because they're opposed to having any kind of continuation there. But I think that the, the operator wants it to continue. So it's likely it would be appealed and would be back to you in the February meeting because the meeting for the Planning Commission would be January twenty-third, and then the appeal date would be sometime in February at one of your meetings. But that would address Commissioner Kelly's concern that the, the Planning Commission take a look at this again. I could, in that, between now and January, ask the Highway Department, excuse me, DOT, South Dakota Department of Transportation, to look at that intersection, to give us any information that they might have, any input on that intersection. That could also be reviewed by the Planning Commission. And the only thing that would, and you, the owner-operator said that typically they're, between now and February, they're not actively mining there because of the weather conditions. So they, I think it would still fall into what would be suitable for them as well. And hopefully by the end of February, we'd have a resolution to this, and it would still give them time to prepare bids and whatnot. So that might be.
Scott, are you saying then that you don't necessarily think a one-year extension is?
I don't think you need that right now. I think that.
Just remanding it back to the Planning Commission, and then it'll be back to the full commission.
And I, I think that what'll happen is it would probably likely be appealed, and it'll be back to you again. And if the Planning Commission should recommend approval, they will have a nice set of conditions that you can look over that would address a new timeframe, reclamation, any, any other traffic issues that came, that might come up. That might be one option, if you don't want to approve it today. But that's certainly, you're, you have a lot of options available to you.
I agree that that might make more sense because they stated that there's not a lot of activity that happens in January and February. They would know fairly soon whether or not they can even be bidding on next summer's work.
I just want to make sure that the gentleman from the gravel company is not doing any bidding and that kind of thing currently for next year's business before February? It's okay, my fault.
I'm sorry, I, I appear needs to just.
I need them. Just making sure that by February, you're not doing a lot of bidding or any business for next year's projections if this gets deferred for a month and a half?
There probably won't be a lot in January. It'll start sometime after Christmas. In, in the middle of January, the DOT will be having jobs to bid in January. December, there won't be a lot.
If we're going to refer it back to the planning, I think we have to give them the opportunity to mine for another whole year. I, I don't think this is necessary because they've met them all, but yeah. Because otherwise, he's holding up on anybody that might want to bid in January or February, and that doesn't work because then you're putting constraints on his business.
Well, that's why I asked the question, frankly.
I, I have one more thing, guys, is you've got to keep in mind that we just can't go up in another gravel pit someplace else because this, this is the only area where there is gravel. You might have to go thirty miles out to Salem to find additional gravel. It's all along Skunk Creek. That's why Friesen, Sukup, everybody's got their pits right in that same corridor along the, uh, uh, Skunk Creek.
Did you read this letter that gives all these new? It's page, I don't know, my pages isn't coming up. It's like, it's page twenty-six of fifty-one. And it's signed by all these different people.
Are these in the, the great, the, the item twenty?
Twenty B.
Okay, no, well, okay. I'm sorry, item twenty. Are these in Mrs. Benson's?
No, they're not in hers.
They're in the, in the original, okay.
And you've got support from over twenty different businesses in the area that use this. And they're going to be able to, at least have to be able to get their bidding in because otherwise, they're looking at extended hauling from someplace else.
Well, that, that was my original thought. So I, I mean, if I can bring you on board with that, why then, perhaps we, at some point, we've got to make a motion and figure out how it's going to go.
Do you want to make, excuse me, do you want to make that motion? Or do you want me to?
I'll make it. I've got to work it out here. My motion would be to refer this back to the Planning Committee, to their January meeting, one, and to provide a one-year extension of the entire contract, which would mean the reclamation in twenty eighteen if, unless something changes. Do I need any more on that?
So if I may inquire to clarify, what you're saying is the same conditions that have already been in place with the prior agreement continue for another year? Okay, with the dates changed on?
We're not writing a new agreement or anything else. We're just simply.
With the reclamation date at the end of eighteen and the permit date at the end of seventeen?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify for the record.
So I guess, Olivia, it would be to extend the, to change the contract date from December thirty first, sixteen. contract date from December thirty first, sixteen to December thirty first, seventeen. And reclamation to occur in twenty, that correct?
On the conditions that have been in place until December thirteenth, sixteen, till now, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, second to that.
Good, I didn't want to go through without second.
I'm not in favor of this, but I will support it only because if I don't, then it comes back next week and it's going to mess everything up going forward, I believe.
Yeah.
Unless if I vote for it, do we defer it till next week and we have five people to discuss this? But then we'd have to do it all over again, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
There are procedural issues with that, but I won't speak more to that.
Okay.
I'm not excited about doing it this way either, to be honest. Because I don't think it gives the gravel company enough time. But to be honest, um, the traffic issue is something that I do have a concern about because Highway thirty-eight is, has become a major traffic, uh, issue. And having school buses on there does make a difference to me anyhow. So I think that's a good reason to review this. And, um, I also think that if the gravel pit's got eight to ten more years of supply, so to speak, that he ought to be able to, to finish that, uh, out because at some point, it will be reclaimed and it will never be exactly the way it was before. But that's part of the growth of the county.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. You operate as you are right now and you go back in February and, or January and Scott will work with you both to get that done and see if there's anything else. Scott will contact the DOT and take care of some of those things and just make sure we'll have everything all tied up with a bow in January, we hope, so. All right, with that, we go on to commission liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports?
Uh, just one, the library, uh, search committee, uh, will not be bringing forth a recommendation. So, uh, I think it's going to be posted again, I'm not sure, this month or maybe in December.
Okay.
And we'll go through the process.
And just, I, I had Carol send out a report from you on opioid addictions and the study that was done by NICO and the National Association of Cities. I would strongly encourage you to read it. It's short. It has more pictures, I think, than words. But there are some very good recommendations in there. And as we see our drug issues in Minniac County and across the state of South Dakota, I think we, as elected officials, need to be taking an active participation in how we move forward with changes. So, um, it was a very good report. Is there any new business? Any old business? I would ask for adjournment. There is no executive session.
Move to adjourn.
Say it.
In favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. And I can't believe we don't have-